Caucus of the Beaufort County Council, if you would please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. This is Monday, June 28th. It is 5:00 PM. This is the County Council Caucus meeting. This is a hybrid meeting, therefore we do have members in chambers and online. This evening online are Mr. Dawson, Mr. Flueheling, and myself. The rest of the members of council are present at the chambers. Public notice of this meeting has been published, posted, and distributed in compliance with the South Carolina Freedom of Information Act. So I would ask a member of council to make a motion to approve the caucus agenda, please.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Second, please.
Second.
Okay. We have it duly motioned and seconded to approve the agenda. Is there any objection? I see no objection, therefore our caucus agenda is approved. Next item is the review of the agenda. You will note on the agenda, we have what looks to be a pretty substantial agenda, but it should flow pretty quickly. We will have one minor change in the agenda. Item number 14 should read "Public Hearing and Third Reading of an Ordinance of the County Council of Beaufort County, South Carolina," etc., etc. So we're going to add the words at the beginning "public hearing" and so that we do have the public hearing and the third reading of that. Otherwise, the county council-
What was that again, Joe?
That's item number 14, Brian. It should read "public hearing and third reading." Okay? Does council have any questions regarding the agenda before us this evening to take action, including the consent agenda items? We've thoroughly discussed those, so everything should be moving right along.
Joe Stu.
Go ahead, Stu.
Yeah, a couple of questions. On item number 14, it has to do with the school impact fee. When we last left it, it wasn't clear what Bluffton and Hilton Head and Hardyville were doing. Is there an update on whether they're in or out, what the impact is on the impact fee?
Our county administrator, Mr. Greenway, will answer that question. Thank you, Eric.
Yes, sir. We do not have an update from Hilton Head. I've had meetings scheduled with the town manager for down in Hilton Head, Mark Orlando, coming up in a week or so. That's going to be one of the topics that we discuss. It's my understanding that Bluffton has agreed to enter into the intergovernmental agreement. If we change the ordinance to reflect that people that are doing affordable housing at 80% of AMI get a 100% waiver on their impact fees, I'm reluctant for us to do that. Currently, the way the ordinance works is if it's 80% AMI, you get a 60% reduction in impact fee waivers. If it's 60% of AMI, you get 100% waiver of impact fees. We're, you know, probably going to recommend that we stay with that just to save some budget because, as you recall, if you waive impact fees for affordable housing, that has to come out of the county fund. The impact fees had to be paid by the general fund in that particular case. So that's the two issues on that. Hardyville, no information from them.
Okay.
They are aware of it, and they have the IGAs.
Thank you. A second item, Mr. Chairman. I see we have the form of government back on the agenda. And when we last left it, my sense was that most, if not all of us, were in favor of doing the form of government, but we were split over whether it ought to be in the current year, which would be November 21, or November of '22. And any time we have a split vote, that hurts us when we're out in the general population for people to say, well, council couldn't even, you know, agree on whether they wanted to do it. My thought runs to, and see what you all think, but my thought runs to taking it in two bites. One would be to approve the concept of doing the form of government, and then, secondly, vote on whether we want it to be in this coming November or November of '22. And in that way, perhaps we would have a vast majority, if not all of us, agreeing that it makes some sense, but not have a split vote. The vote would only be relative to which year we do it in. So maybe we're the discussion, see what the rest of you think.
Okay. Is there anyone else wants to comment on that before I do? Seeing none, I have talked to several other people about this. One of the concerns they have about moving it to 2022 is when you would have candidates who have to spend significant dollars of their own campaigning for the position of auditor or treasurer, and that they would be reluctant to engage in the expenditure of funds if, in fact, they would be expending funds to be elected to a position that would be eliminated as a result of the November election in 2022. So that poses a problem for them, and that's why they would not want it in 2022, that it would be us to do it in 2021 to determine whether or not we would have an election in 2022 or not. Mr. Cunningham.
Correct me if I'm wrong, aren't both of their terms up, and their election wouldn't be till 2023? So that'd be a year before their campaigning, correct?
No, they serve through June of '23, even-
Correct.
They're elected in November of '22, but regardless of whether, which year we do it, they serve through June of '23. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, with regard to Mr. Rodman's suggestion, I would support the breaking it down to two votes to gain unanimous consent for the vote on the change of government, and then we could deliberate further on what year it should go in. So I would support that recommendation.
So when we get to the meeting, you could then make a motion to change the agenda so that that is bifurcated.
Mr. Chairman, just a question, a legal question. Would we have to go back to three readings if we split it, which would negate, which would probably negate getting anything on this ballot?
Ms. Howard, you're correct. What is the posture before council is the adoption of an ordinance at third reading. And the ordinance contains the date of 2021. So if you want to split the date out, you'd have to amend the ordinance either tonight or start all over again. And I would caution you, I don't think we can do that without a special meeting of council sometime in July or so because you have to convey the referendum question to the Election Commission no later than August 16th. And you'd have to have three more readings of a new ordinance with a new date in it.
But in fact, it would negate this, anything on the ballot.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, that being the case, I won't bring it up. I just want to throw it out there as a possibility. It does seem to me we're awful late in the game, and I'm not aware of anybody out there who is going to run with this mantle of changing the form of government at this point.
Any further discussion about that item? Okay.
One other question, if I could, Joe. This is for staff. One of the items that we approved at public facilities was the replacing the HVAC at the old courthouse on Bay Street. And I noticed that where that money's coming out of the sheriff's budget, but I don't remember offhand whether we've approved that in either the current budget that we're considering or the last one. So I guess the question I have is where is that money coming from? It's a million dollars.
A million dollars is coming from a transfer from the sheriff's budget, and this year's budget has been modified accordingly to address that transfer.
So it's in the budget that we're considering now?
No, it's not. We're doing it out of, it's my understanding, we're doing it from this year's budget with a transfer of surplus from the sheriff into the county coffers to pay for the HVAC work. If that answers your question.
I think it does.
Right.
So what you're saying is if he has excess money to the tune of a million dollars, which he is transferring back to us, and then is this in one of our budgets then? Where does it come out of?
Do you know the answer to that? What? It's in her budget or it's in our budget? It's in their budget.
FY.
It's not 2 million, it's 1 million, right?
It's 1 million.
This is FY.
970 something thousand dollars.
That's the cost, but I saw a transfer of a million dollars.
That's right.
I'm sorry. So it's out of the sheriff's budget, but it's in our budget for approval in this cycle? Is that what we're saying? If I don't want to bring it up, we get to council, but-
Yeah. Okay, so let me take a shot at this, and I may have to wait and give you an answer on this until I have a chance to look at all my-
Why don't we just do it Wednesday because we're going to have our- to have our meeting then anyway?
Yeah.
That's fine.
That'd be good.
No point.
Thank you.
What's the nature of the million dollar excess?
Um, that I don't know. Um, it's a million, it's a million dollars. I mean, it's--
Oh, it's not money.
You know, a lot of your, like, you don't, um, so anyway, yeah.
That was all I had.
You have the same situation with a couple of elected officials, so anyway.
Not us, of course.
Do what now?
Not us, of course.
And no, not y'all. No, not, not, not council.
Any other questions for, uh, Mr. Greenway? Any other questions on the agenda? Okay. Um, any, uh, discussions from council members on any other item to bring up for the good of the order? Excellent.
Joe?
Yes, George.
Your cousin, I do. Go ahead, York.
Well, your hand was up first. Go ahead.
Um, our, our meeting is on Wednesday to approve the budgets, as I understand it.
Correct.
And, um, um, I, I have a question, which I think the school district has answered. I haven't read their response to it, but it kind of goes like this. Um, I think we're all in favor of the budget as it was proposed. Um, however, it does have in it a tax increase, which then will increase their, um, reserves. I think it was up to about $46 million. Um, there, there's a lot of moving pieces in terms of how much money they will actually collect. You got whatever the mill value is going to be. They got about $70 million coming from various federal sources. Um, I don't know how the year has ended up for them, um, but it does seem to me that, uh, having a tax increase where the net effect is only to increase the reserve, which 15 years ago was like 8 million and now we're up to 46 million, uh, seems like it's unnecessary, particularly if you think about the purpose of a reserve. We've been through a hurricane and we've been through a pandemic and both of those we went through without much impact on the reserve. So my thought process is, see what the rest of you think, is that when we get to Wednesday, we might want to bifurcate that vote. And one would be to approve the, the budget. And then, secondly, consider, um, whether or not we want a tax increase. Alternatively, we could improve the budget and then with the understanding that we would come back, uh, before the tax bills have to be finalized in the September, October standpoint, be a lot smarter about how the year ended, what the mill value is, what the federal money is, and then approve the, um, tax increase if it's warranted. So it seems to me that might be a, a logical argument for us. And I think I had suggested, hopefully we're doing this, that we actually broke that out, uh, into an A and B on that agenda for Wednesday.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
Once again, the, the posture before council is its third reading of an ordinance. And the ordinance has, at this point, the, uh, the millage rate and the budget in it. And so it would have to be an amendment on third reading. Bifurcating, I guess, might work, but it would, it would ultimately be an amendment to an ordinance.
So you're saying we have to go back to second reading?
No, sir. You can amend on third reading.
Okay. Yeah, I, I don't, I don't view it as a overall, it is a very significant impact on--
I understand.
Yeah, okay. Thank you, Kurt.
Mr. Cunningham.
Uh, just a comment on a couple of things Stu said. Uh, one of the things about all of us agreeing on the budget, I actually am still going to vote no on that school budget. Sorry, guys. Um, uh, but I, I just don't see their, their underlining that they continue to say is that the federal money is not recurring. It's not every year. So they need this money in their budget for the achievement gap. But yet that still doesn't address the fact that they are getting the money for this year. So why wouldn't the raise come for years down the road? Um, I, I'm still going to continue to push back on that. Um, they haven't given me any reason to see why there isn't areas they could save on their budget to continue to give the teachers the raise, um, or the stipend, I should say, especially when their student enrollment is looking to be down. If you, even if you take out COVID, there still look like they're going to be down between 300 to 400 students compared to the year before COVID, when they kept their budget the same. So just a, just a thought before we get into Wednesday and come to that vote.
Other questions? Yours?
Jim. Um, we'd love for us to, um, bring some resolution to the, um, the, um, employees, retired employees' health benefits. At some point in time, I, I think we've been waiting, um, the last couple of months and nothing has happened. So we'd love to bring some resolution to that as soon--
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Clever, did you get my email from last week?
Probably didn't.
I sent you an email to, to reassure you that we are about at the finish line on that. The, the difficulty we're facing now is simply I want to have the new HR director weigh in. Paget had looked at it, but then his abrupt departure leaves that gap. But, um, and we're, actually, we're discussing it tomorrow internally as staff. So, um, I'm expecting we can bring something in subject to Eric's, uh, approval in July or, or at least August.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Cunningham.
I'm just curious, do we have any update on, um, the new Riverside library? Not sure who exactly direct that with, but I know about a month ago, we talked about negotiating for the land and getting conceptual drawings to see if we're going to move forward. And I haven't heard anything since.
Yes, sir. This is Chuck Atkinson. I'll be happy to address that.
Hey, Chuck, you're always on point.
Yeah, no problem. Uh, the, uh, Public Facilities Committee approved, uh, the architecture and engineering at the last meeting. We are holding that. We're not bringing that forward because we're still in negotiation with the developer for purchasing the land. Uh, we received all of the due diligence to include the appraisal and, uh, we're now working with, uh, the architect, tentatively about the size of the land and potentially making the size a little bit bigger because it's a 16,000 square foot building and 1.3 acres is a little small for that. And as soon as we get that resolved, we're going to bring both of them, uh, to council. The land purchase we're going to bring to commit and then bring both of them to council as soon as that's all.
Thanks, Chuck.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Uh, any other comments? Because I have a legal question for, um, our team, legal team. Okay. Um, for our legal team, uh, the, the question about the school district budget. What is the requirement of county council? It is my understanding that whatever budget they submit, we say yes or no to. If we say yes, we are saying yes to the budget and the millage rate included in that budget. If we say no to the budget, what we are saying is that we will allow them to have a CPI increase and an enrollment increase only. Is that a correct understanding of what our obligation is?
Mr. Cavaney.
I don't think you heard you, uh, Mr. Taylor.
Mr. Cavaney's been, uh, looking into that with, uh, bond council and the school district council. Tom, do you have an update?
I don't have an update, per me, on the conversation that we all had, um, uh, last Thursday. And, um, Chairman, if we want to have this conversation, I'd prefer that we have it in executive session as opposed to in the public because it's clearly a receipt of legal advice.
Okay.
So I'd, I'd try to do it there.
Okay. So we, we, can we get that answer before Wednesday?
Yes.
Is it possible to go into executive session now to discuss that, since we have time?
Um, certainly, we could do that.
I'll make that motion.
Well, does, does Mr. Cavaney have an answer for us to go into executive session or not yet?
All I can do is relay to you the discussion that we had, Eric and Kurt and I had with, um, their legal counsel and their outside legal counsel as well.
Okay.
To answer your question, counsel and the count, I don't have an answer to you, um, but I can share for you, share with you what we heard. So we can do it either way.
Um, I, I would prefer that we get a definitive answer.
There, there may not be a definitive answer, uh, but we can, uh, we can certainly hold that and do an executive session on your special call and meeting on Wednesday as, as a first item, uh, to give you that legal advice if you'd like to do so, if, uh, Mr. Cunningham is okay with that.
To follow up on what, um, the county administrator has just said, uh, and so that you're not disappointed on Wednesday, we will continue to work on that issue, but it appears that the, uh, question is unresolved.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Uh, Joe?
Yes.
Just wanted to comment on--
We have to withdraw a motion before we--
No, I don't know if it--
I'll withdraw.
Did it have a second?
I don't know if he made it.
No, it didn't even have a second.
I don't know.
Okay. Um, it, it, well, it may have changed over time. If you go back to the time that I was on the school board 15 years ago when I came on, historically, we've had a number of years there where the, the county council did not approve their budget. And then what Joe described as the enrollment and a CPI kicked in, it was called the maintenance of local effort. And when I asked about that within the last year, I'm told that that's still in effect. But you, you may want to look that up, Tom. It's called the maintenance of, uh, local effort. I, I think the other piece that perhaps comes up, uh, to research is, you know, when, when we approve the budget, there's money streams that come from various places for the school board. Uh, they're now coming up with a gigantic influx of money, um, from the federal government. And I guess that we, the question begs the question of whether we have to approve that, uh, appropriation also. Uh, I would think we would, but it'd be interesting to see what, uh, our legal beagles think.
Well, we'll do our best to have information for you on Wednesday. Uh, if I may, go back to the question on the, um, on the sheriff's piece regarding HVAC. Um, that was a $1 million transfer from the sheriff's repair to buildings line item in the current fiscal year budget. Um, the transfer has not yet happened to our general fund because we need your action tonight. Once we do that, once you do it tonight, transfer will occur and then, uh, sometime in the next month or so, you all will be presented that same information, uh, to do as a part of a carryover budget into the new fiscal year.
Okay. So, thank, thank you very much for that, Eric.
Okay. Is there any other discussion on any other item? Okay. Seeing none, before we close out this meeting and resume at 6 o'clock, um, Mr. Hervishon wishes to, um, have a moment. Mr. Hervishon?
At, at council, please.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
At council, please.
At council.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Do you wish to do it then at the beginning of the council meeting?
Uh, the end is fine.
The end is fine. Okay. Very good.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other, um, item to come before us before we adjourn the caucus meeting? Seeing none, we will adjourn the caucus meeting at 5:25. We will resume the meeting at, uh, 6:00 PM. And we'll see you at 6:00 PM.
Good evening, everyone. Public notice of this meeting has been published, posted, and distributed in compliance with the South Carolina Freedom of Information Act. As discussed in our caucus meeting, I would ask for a member of council to amend the agenda so that item 14 will read as "Public Hearing and Third Reading of an Ordinance of the County Council of Beaufort County, South Carolina," etc.
Move the amendment, Mr. Chairman.
Motion to amend by Mr. Rodman.
Second.
Second to amend by Mr. Somerville. Dooley motioned and seconded. Is there any discussion on the amendment? I see no discussion. The amended agenda will be approved without objection, and I see no objections, therefore it is approved. I would ask for a motion to approve the amended agenda.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Motion, second please.
Second.
Motioned and seconded. Is there any discussion about the amended agenda being approved as amended? Seeing none, this will be approved without any objections, and I see no objections, therefore the agenda is approved as amended. Item number five is approval of minutes. On the agenda that I have before me, I do not have specific dates, so I'm going to turn to our clerk to council to provide me with those dates.
It's from the meeting of April 12th.
April 12th. Okay, may I have a motion to approve the minutes of our April 12th meeting?
Come on, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second.
A duly motioned and seconded for the approval of the April 12th meetings. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, these will be approved without any objections. Seeing no objections, the minutes are approved. I now turn to our administrator, Mr. Greenway, for his report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen of Beaufort County and also members of our council. I appreciate the opportunity to address you all this evening. My administrator's report this evening is only going to consist of recognizing employees. We have two individuals from various departments and then a group from a very important department that we're going to recognize this evening. So first this evening, I'm going to ask Ms. Valerie Garvin to come on up. Ms. Garvin assists in our assessor's office. She started with us in the register of deeds office in 2001 and began working with the assessor's office in 2007. She has worked a variety of positions up to her current position as residential appraiser. It's always good and it's one of the things that I enjoy about working in an organization such as Beaufort County so that we have the opportunities to train folks and to get their education experience and watch them rise through the ranks of the system. I'm a big believer in promoting from within. If you have good talent that you're working with, you should always provide an opportunity for them. Ms. Garvin's job duties include, but are not limited to, valuing residential real property for countywide reassessments, which occur on a five-year cycle, as well as explaining and defending those valuations to taxpayers. She probably has to do a lot of defending of her evaluations on that five-year cycle. Reoccurring annual duties consist of field inspections and data entry of new improvements, land valuation for new subdivisions, and review of assessable transfer of interest to determine if the transfer triggers the property to be reappraised. Something unique about her is that we want to acknowledge and congratulate her on passing her state-certified MASH residential appraiser license certification. Apparently, this has been revamped in the last few years to make it much more difficult, and that's a big achievement for her as it is for the county because, again, we are as strong as the quality of the employees in our organization and the certifications that they hold. And certifications mean that they have experienced and gone through appropriate education classes to achieve that certification, which makes us stronger as a unit. Ms. Garvin is a valued member of the assessor's office team. Her contributions in determining real property valuation is used in the real property valuation projections provided to finance to determine the value of a meal, and she's played a very big role this particular year, and the assessor's office as a whole has had to play a lot of catch-up. So thank you for your service, and I'm going to ask you at this time if you want to say a few words briefly. It's up to you.
First and foremost, I would like to thank the county, first of all, God, because nothing's possible without God. And I would like to thank the county because ever since I've been here, I've been extremely happy with the county, with my employer, my management. Currently, my management includes Ebony Sanders as the assessor and Milton Boswell as my direct supervisor, and I would like to thank them from the bottom of my heart because they have been such a support for me. And I would like to thank my husband as well. He's been great with pushing and encouraging me. So just, I just want to thank everybody, and I'm very, very happy and excited to be a part of the assessor's team. Thank you.
And this is the husband that just got thanked as well. Ms. Duncan, come on up.
She also brought her husband as well. This is Daphne Duncan. She works in our finance department. She's our accounts payable supervisor. She's been with us 11 months and 15 days. She's fairly new with us, and whenever I list all of the things that she does, I think you all are going to be amazed, and I may not be able to get it through, get through all of it because it is very complicated. Daphne gathers all invoices, distributes new invoices to appropriate departments for approval and coding, takes approved coded invoices and validates all the information, making sure that the correct person has signed off on it, and checking for tax, PO, and any other information necessary to complete the payment as needed. She also submits South Carolina sales and use tax on their website. She processes all payments for the treasurer, ACH South Carolina taxes, and account payable invoices both via check and EFT. She provides database maintenance for accounts payable for entire, for the entire county to include new vendor entry, payment method updates, and addresses updates in Munis. She reconciles the vendor accounts to keep them current, implements a paperless system to streamline the process of accounts payable, and she trains all these procedures with regards to the accounts payable status. So she is a very busy person and education classes to achieve that certification, which makes us stronger as a unit. Ms. Garvin is a valued member of the assessor's office team. Her contributions in determining real property valuation is used in the real property valuation projections provided to finance to determine the value of a meal, and she's played a very big role this particular year, and the assessor's office as a whole has had to play a lot of catch-up. So thank you for your service, and I'm going to ask you at this time if you want to say a few words briefly. It's up to you.
First and foremost, I would like to thank the county, first of all, God, because nothing's possible without God. And I would like to thank the county because ever since I've been here, I've been extremely happy with the county, with my employer, my management. Currently, my management includes Ebony Sanders as the assessor and Milton Boswell as my direct supervisor, and I would like to thank them from the bottom of my heart because they have been such a support for me. And I would like to thank my husband as well. He's been great with pushing and encouraging me. So just, I just want to thank everybody, and I'm very, very happy and excited to be a part of the assessor's team.
And this is the husband that just got thanked as well. Ms. Duncan, come on up. She also brought her husband as well.
All right.
This is Daphne Duncan. She works in our finance department. She's our accounts payable supervisor. She's been with us 11 months and 15 days. She's fairly new with us, and whenever I list all of the things that she does, I think you all are going to be amazed, and I may not be able to get it through, get through all of it because it is very complicated. Daphne gathers all invoices, distributes new invoices to appropriate departments for approval and coding, takes approved coded invoices and validates all the information, making sure that the correct person has signed off on it, and checking for tax, PO, and any other information necessary to complete the payment as needed. She also submits South Carolina sales and use tax on their website. She processes all payments for the treasurer, ACH South Carolina taxes, and account payable invoices both via check and EFT. She provides database maintenance for accounts payable for entire, for the entire county to include new vendor entry, payment method updates, and addresses updates in Munis. She reconciles the vendor accounts to keep them current, implements a paperless system to streamline the process of accounts payable, and she trains all these procedures with regards to the accounts payable status. So she is a very busy person, and I want to use this moment, if I might, to add a little something here. This is just talking about us paying bills here at the county, so it is a complicated process for the people and the public. It is not something that we just do, something doesn't just come in and we write a check out to people without going through an extensive process to clear that through our system, and Daphne plays an integral role with that. Something unique about her is that she has lived in the area for most of her life, enjoying the wonderful beaches and amenities the area has to offer. So anyway, do you want to say anything? Thank you for your service.
Thank you. Thank you very much. It's a great honor. I was very surprised, and I just want to thank the Lord and my husband and the team that I have working with me. They are wonderful people, and the training's been great. And I have to say Francis Collins was a big help in my training when I first got here, so I did have to say thank you, Francis, even though you're not here anymore. Thank you very much.
This is a whole group right here, and you recognize from their leader, you recognize where they're from, so.
You're answering my questions, too. We need all the diversity in that group.
So I asked for one name, and as, you know, as Maria is always the overachiever, she provided me a group. So anyway, these folks are from the treasurer's office, and they are the 20 tax, treasurer's office 2020 tax season recognition. So they're all here. This past year, with an unexpected delay in the tax bills created difficult and challenging situations for both our taxpayers and our local governments. Because of the ingenuity and professionalism of the treasurer's office team, the impact that would have otherwise been felt by our customers and the county agencies was greatly minimized, and I can attest to that. These are not my words, I'm reading them, as many of you know, but I wholeheartedly agree with that. They did a great job. The treasurer's office has three teams: the operations team, the accounting and data team, and the delinquency team. The accounting and data team worked in shifts nearly around the clock to create the process and data criteria for the prepayment program and kept open lines of communication with county departments and other outside agencies. The operations team adapted their business rules so our taxpayers could be properly informed and paid successfully. The delinquency team adjusted the delinquency process so customers could have an extended time to pay and fill in anywhere the other teams needed help. So very big teamwork there. I'm not sure I have enough names on this piece, on this paper, to capture everyone, but I'm going to read those names, and when I read your name, if you'll raise your hand, I'd appreciate it. Kimberly Chesney, George Wright, Doris Bowers, Jeff Deluch, Crystal Athie, Daphne Butler, Brittany Picas, and if I mispronounce your name, I'm sorry. Teagan Grant, Conia Ward, Jenny Stannick, Allison White, Laurie Parker, Wendy Ward, Alexis Frazier, Sonya Pickering, Candace Ferguson, Chris Thomas, Lisa Grinnell, Janet Kavanaugh, Heidi Sanchez, Amy Seacrid, Shadana Thurston, Kelly Weisen, Pusson, okay, Tisha Allen-Burt, Angelisa Johnson. And you want to say a few brief words to Maria?
Sure.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much. Thank you all for your service. Let's give them a round of applause.
I just want to, we had a little gathering over at our office before we came over, and I, I teared up and cried over there, so I got that out of the way. This is an incredible group of people, and I, and as Whitney and so many others in administration can attest, we were literally watching our cash flow every day to make sure that we could still operate while the tax season was preparing to get started. And I, I promise you that without the work of all of these awesome people right here and the people who couldn't make it this evening, that would not have happened. We essentially created another way to have an entire tax process in under 14 business days, and that is because of all of them. And I just wanted to thank Eric for giving us the opportunity to recognize all of them because I couldn't pick just one, so thank you.
Thank you all for your service. I appreciate it. Even though you're not, even though you're an elected official, it's always great to work with you, so underneath all. We had a little glitch. Anytime you do something like this, you have a little glitch, but this is not to diminish her. I'm going to stand here and ask a couple of questions to her for her. This is Shamile Washington. She works in our assessor's office. How long have you been with us?
Almost two years.
Almost two years, and what do you do? What's your specific?
I'm an appraisal technician.
You're an appraisal technician. What does that mean? You take the word?
Well, a bunch of things.
Okay, all right. So you're, you're the, you're, you're new or out?
Yes.
Okay, all right, okay. I got you. Is there something unique about you that you would like to share publicly, something you do in the way of a hobby or anything? Anything that you want to say? I'm right here, so you go.
Just a few words, just thankful to the staff that I work with in the assessor's office. I'm very grateful to work with Ebony Sanders, Milton Boswell, and Pamela Holmes. I'm thankful for their patience, believing in me, putting forth effort to make sure that I can do, be the best that I can be as far as in my role, and I'm just very thankful.
Well, thank you. Thank you for your service.
That concludes my report. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you very much. It's nice to honor those people and keeping it going a little bit now. We do have some proclamations that we want to do. I will call on Mr. Somerville to handle item number seven, a proclamation honoring Clarence CJ Cummings.
Thank you. It is my honor tonight to be able to honor a superstar. Not, we don't have a lot of superstars. We have a lot of stars, but we have a lot of superstars in Beaufort County, but we do have a few, and we get to honor one tonight. Now, I don't know about you all, when I was a little boy growing up here in Beaufort, when somebody turned out not so good, you could always hear somebody say, usually an uncle or a grandparent, "Well, he didn't have good fetchings up." Didn't have good fetchings up. When somebody did really well, you heard the opposite. You heard somebody say, "He had really good," or "She had really good fetchings up." So the young man that I'm going to talk about tonight had some really good fetchings up, and I'd like to ask his parents to come up. Clarence and Savasia, please come up and join me as I read this proclamation. Whereas Clarence Cummings Jr., also known as CJ, was born on June, June 6, 2000 and raised in Beaufort, South Carolina by his parents, Clarence and Savasia Cummings. And whereas CJ graduated from Beaufort High School in 2018, and whereas CJ began weightlifting, his weightlifting career at the age of 10?
10.
And at the age of 11, became the youngest weightlifter ever to compete, I'm sorry, to complete a clean and jerk of twice the body weight, power cleaning 200 pounds. I can't even imagine. I'm sorry. That's just beyond my, I'm going to say that again. And at the age of 11, became the youngest weightlifter ever to complete a clean and jerk of twice his body weight, power cleaning 200 pounds. Awesome. And whereas, since the age of 11, CJ has soared through numerous competitions and broke records along the way. And whereas CJ is to make his Olympic debut on the weightlifting team of the United States at the 2020 Tokyo Summer Olympics in Japan, being held in, I know you said 2020. Where's that? No, it's, it's going to be held in, on July 21st of 2021. It was postponed for a year. Through August 8, 2021. The games were postponed due to COVID. And whereas CJ is one of eight members and the youngest member on the team representing the United States. How old is he?
20.
Just barely 20. Awesome.
Just turned 20. He just turned 20.
Just turned 20. And whereas CJ's career highlights are IWF junior champion 2016, 2017, 2018, 2019, IWF youth world champion 2016, 2017, Pan American champion 2019, 2020, silver medal Pan American Championship 2017. If my math is right, he would have been 16 or 17 years old. Barely, if he was 17, he was barely 17. Youth Pan American champion in 2014, he was 14 years old? 2015, held the junior world's record in snatch, clean, and jerk in total 73 kilogram, 73 kilograms, which is 160.94 pound category. And whereas CJ currently holds 23 American records. 23 American, I don't know anybody who holds 23 any kind of records. Now therefore be it resolved that Beaufort County Council extends its congratulations and best wishes to Clarence CJ Cummings Jr. as he represents our county and our state and our great nation in the 2020 Tokyo Summer Olympic Games. CJ might even be watching this on live streaming. I don't, I don't know if he is. He is congratulating. And I'm going to present this to you all and ask you, Mr. Cummings, if you'd like to say a word. There's a microphone. Ask him if he can hear from either one of both of you.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen of the board, community members. I'm so humbled to accept this proclamation on CJ's behalf. He could not have been here today because he's in Detroit, Michigan, preparing for the senior nationals this weekend, but we thank you. We are humbled. He's worked hard for this moment, and we could not be any prouder of him.
Joe, you're on mute.
Thank you. Our next proclamation is going to be handled by Mr. Brian Flurelling. He will introduce Mr. Ed Pappas as he reads the proclamation.
Thank you. Ed, would you come up to the podium, please, and Diane with you, please? I'd really appreciate it. Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Ed. A proclamation, whereas Diane J. Schmellick has served as a member of the Beaufort County Planning Commission since 2004, and whereas Diane J. Schmellick also served as a member of the Zoning Board of Appeals from July of 1999 to March of 2004. And whereas Ms. Schmellick willingly sacrificed many evenings, and I have to say lots of daytime time as well, to faithfully serve the public, providing input, making decisions in often challenging planning and land use issues. Whereas Ms. Schmellick helped provide recommendations to council on some very high-profile projects, including the Southern and Northern Beaufort County regional plans, the 2010 comprehensive plan, and Community Development Code. And whereas Ms. Schmellick never shied away from voicing her input on matters coming before the commission and always voted her conscience. And whereas Ms. Schmellick still has a strong desire to see our region grow and develop in a manner that preserves and builds on what we all cherish about Beaufort County. Now therefore be it resolved that Beaufort County Council recognizes Mrs. Diane J. Schmellick's vital role and dedication to Beaufort County by making it a better place to live, work, and play. Diane, I had the pleasure of working with you on the Planning Commission for a number of years, a number of years ago. At that time, you were the experienced hand, and I felt I learned an awful lot sitting next to you in all of our meetings, and it was a real pleasure to work with you. And I'm, I'm sorry to see that you, you've decided now it's time to retire, and I wish you nothing but the best of, of life. I really, I have enjoyed knowing you. I hope you don't go away completely. I hope you'll still, you're a constituent of mine. I hope you'll continue to give me a call on important issues, especially planning and zoning. At this time, Ed Pappas has a few words to say. He's chairman of the, of the County Planning Commission right now. Ed, do you have some choice words?
Just, just a couple of words. I've had the privilege to work with Diane in several different capacities over the past 15 years. I, too, have learned a lot in my new responsibilities with the Planning Commission. I thank Diane for her contributions on behalf of all the members of the Planning Commission, who I'm sure are observing this this evening, and wish you well. And I have the proclamation to hand to her.
Thanks. Thanks very much. Diane, do you have a few words for us?
I enjoy, I enjoy, I really enjoyed being on the Planning Commission all those years. Unfortunately, at this point, I'm running out of patience, which is why I submitted my resignation. It said, it said because of my health. It has nothing to do with my health. I was running out of patience. So, but I, I do appreciate being recognized because I really enjoy being on the Planning Commission. I really, it gave me a lot of satisfaction to do it.
Thanks. You made a real impact on our community, on our county, Diane, and I want to thank you personally from the bottom of my heart for everything you've done for Beaufort County. Thank you so much.
Good for her.
I love it.
Thanks again, Diane. And thank you, Ed, for helping.
Thank you, Brian. Item number nine is a presentation by the Port Royal Sound Foundation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Dean Moss. I'm chairman of the board of the Port Royal Sound Foundation, and thanks for the opportunity to appear before you today. I'm joined by Jody Hayward, who is the executive director of the Port Royal Sound Foundation, and Ed Pappas, who is vice chair. The purpose here tonight is to thank you. Thank Beaufort County Council for the incredible support that you've provided us in our short life. We've, we've been going here since about 2012, and we have managed in that time, as I think you're aware, to put the Maritime Center together, and it has become one of the most popular places in the county for children, for tourists, for visitors, and we are working on other major projects, which Jody's going to major projects, which Jody's going to talk about in just a minute. We want to give you this gift. This is a, I just may continue. The staff from Beaufort County has been very helpful to us. Anytime we call, they are very available and are very, very helpful. And we have worked with you in the preservation of about 100 acres across the street from Maritime, from the Maritime Center. And cooperatively with the county, we own that land together. And working with the staff on that has been a pleasure, and we look forward to continuing. I think there are some real super opportunities on that property for the county and the region going forward. We want to present you with this map. This is a smaller version of the very large map at the Maritime Center, and that is nine feet by 14 feet. If you haven't seen it, you need to come and look at it. It is fabulous. It occupies an entire wall. It shows the Port Royal Sound, which you can see covers almost all of Beaufort County. There's really, other than the edge over in the Ace Basin, and maybe a little bit down on the other side of Defuski, Beaufort County is all in the Port Royal Sound. It was created and hand-drawn by Travis Folk at the New World Cartography Center in Green Pond, and a county ATX grant to the Port Royal Sound Foundation assisted us in doing that map. We want you to have this. And what we'd like, it gives, well, let me, it gives a clear picture of the degree to which Beaufort County's highland is surrounded by the marshes and the waters of Port Royal Sound. Our desire is that you hang this map in the conference room, in your conference room, and use it to remind yourselves of how important this is, and what your job is as far as we are concerned, which is protecting this incredible ecosystem. By protecting this ecosystem, you protect everything else in the county, both physically and economically. And we have some data that we can provide you to explain that statement. What I'm going to do is ask Jody Hayward, who is our executive director, to just give you a few words updating you on the things we're doing and the things we're pushing forward in the future. And we do appreciate, again, the opportunity to be here with you.
Thank you. And thank you very much for y'all's support. I just want to reiterate what Dean had said. Y'all have seen the big exhibit at the Maritime Center, right? If you haven't, please come by. I'd love to give you a tour. It's fabulous. It's the biggest map of the area, you know, here. And everyone gets a really good feel for where they are on the Port Royal Sound, how close we are by water, but yet how far we are, you know, by car. But thank you very much for your support. We have some new projects coming up, our pavilion that we're going to be building, which is going to be one of the only great community structures that are, that will be in mid-county. We hope to get started on construction on that at the end of this year or beginning of next year. It's going to seat about 320 people. It's going to be a wonderful place to have events. But what we're really excited about is it's going to help us to expand our educational and research programming, and bringing more people together, hosting forums and events there. You know, we have summer camp going on right now, and it is packed. And we'd love to have more kids being able to experience the Port Royal Sound. So having a place like the pavilion there next to us, we're going to be able to bring in more kids. You know, last year was a challenge for us, too, but we got through it great. The crowds have definitely returned. We had over 150 people a few days last week, which was just wonderful. The summer's full of programming. We're already meeting with the county about school field trips coming back, because we get about 3,000 kids every year in school field trips. And last year, you know, when we couldn't get with the kids, we did something called Zoo Zooms, where we had Zoom calls with classrooms with like an alligator, or a terrapin, or a horseshoe crab. So we were able to kind of break up the school day and do something virtual with them and still stay connected. So, you know, moving forward, everything is just growing. We're excited about the research that we're getting involved in. We've just recently given another grant to USCB. We're working on some water quality projects with USCB, which is very exciting. We're starting a new citizen science program at the Maritime Center as well, to expand what we know about the Port Royal Sound, because you guys know it is the magnet that brings people here to live here and to visit here. And it is so important to educate people about the Port Royal Sound and to keep it clean and healthy, because it does define the health of our community. So again, we just want to say thank you. We welcome you guys to come visit us. Please reach out to me if you ever want a tour, if you want to talk about any of these programs. But thank you so much. We appreciate you guys.
Thank you very much for that wonderful presentation. We are now at the citizen comments. And since I cannot be in person for the citizen comments, and I do know there are members of the public in chamber tonight that wish to make comments to county council, I'm going to turn this section over to Vice Chair Somerville, who will handle the public comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have, we have four individuals who have signed up. And the first individual, and I apologize if I mispronounce anyone's name. I assure you it's not intentional. But the first speaker will be Linda Moye Hills, I believe. Welcome. I think it's actually Lloyd Hills. Am I saying it right?
My name is Linda M. Moye Hills.
I apologize. Welcome.
That's okay. I have some questions that I just need some answers. And one of them is, what comprehensive plan that you all have for the Fairfield community? Second, when do you grandfather in a person's land? If not, why haven't we grandfathered in the land? Like, the land been in my family for over, hm. My father died at 79, so I'm 65 now. That's nine years ago. And when they died, they had plans for us to develop the land that we wanted to. The next question I want to know, Sands Point Road has become a commercialized area. Always been residential ever since I was born in 1955. I noticed that behind this Oyster Factory, is that residential? Is that the residential area? And I need to know, you all need to go back and revise Sands Point Road, because from Short's Landing Road, who saw is residential? So I ask that you all think about everything that I've said. And if you see, I stated that I am a native of Beaufort County, been here for 55 years, just like my father. I had planned to do things with the 14.74 acres that we have, that you all are now telling us what we can do with our land. I need you all to really think about it. Because most of you all have children, too, and you all have futures, plan their future, that you wanted them to do things. So think about Sands Point Road. We don't want that to become commercialized. Started at Highway 21, stop at Short's Landing Road. That's fine. So I ask you all to just think about it, because we have children, too, and we have a future for them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Floyd Shannon.
Thank you for letting me speak again. It appears that my comments from the last meeting did not resonate with the proper authority. So I'm here to try again. I mark my calendar every time Whistle Road was a complete work on. I mark it to ensure that when I say it's 10 weeks, it's 10 weeks. I learned this several years ago. As of this Wednesday, it will be 10 weeks since our road was worked on. For pity myself of last meeting, according to 2019, 2020 Beaufort County Transportation Committee, there are only 76.4 miles of unpaved public roads in Beaufort County. Not my word, they're not. So if you calculate 10 weeks into 76 miles, that's 7.6 miles per week. That does not seem reasonable. But according to Sergeant Friday, just the facts. Those are the facts. Maybe we're being deliberately left out of the rotations in the county. I don't know. But we are not getting our share of maintenance. I've made several calls to Neil DeSai. After several calls, he asked me not to call him again, but to call John Miller. All of John Miller are ineffective and useless. I just ask, is there anywhere else I can go other than county council for resolution of this untenable situation? Now, this situation just did not start this year. It started late 2019. 2020, as I mentioned last time, our roads were graded seven times the whole year. We need help. Any comments?
As you know, Mr. Shannon, this is not a dialogue. This is an opportunity for you to speak to us. If you'd like somebody to contact you, we'd be happy to have that happen.
I would love that to happen.
Okay, sir. We'll do it.
Thank you.
Mr. Shannon, would you leave your phone number with the clerk before you leave?
It's on the sheet.
She does.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker will be Billy Player. Welcome, sir.
Hey, how are you?
Good.
My name is Billy Player. I'm co-owner of the property at 335 Joe Fraser Road. We're on the dock at tonight for our second reading. And I just want to make a comment that something may come up tonight that I want to make a comment now, since I may not have a chance later on. There may be an issue come up about some permits that we did on some buildings later on in 2005, 2006. And our comment to that was, we hired a contractor to complete and design and build our building. We also allowed him to do the permit obtaining at that time. But I don't want the fact that the issue is, why in 1999 were we labeled non-conforming in our, in our property? But our request for a zoning change because of what happened in 1999. We were zoned incorrectly. And I believe in the last meeting two weeks ago, it was pretty much established that we were there operating prior to 1999, prior to any residents being close to us. But I do want to give you a scenario that is so similar to ours, but they had a favorable outcome and we did not. Down the road, a little more than a mile, 265 Bay Pines Road, also is a, was a moving and storage company. Large commercial warehouse, built prior to 1999, also has residential nearby. But in 1999, when zoning came through, they were giving the zoning decoration of S1, put them in a conforming manner because of the warehousing conditions under S1. Why weren't we given that same consideration? We were also a moving and storage company. We were also built there before any residents were close by. But we get designated T2R, which doesn't allow us to be in a conforming manner. T2RC is what we're asking for. T2RC allows us to be in a conforming manner, and it also allows for residential to be in that same zone. S1, according to the zoning chart that I see, doesn't allow for residential. Residential is there now. Residential was there, near there in 1999. And as a matter of fact, right now, you go there and there's an apartment complex next door to 265 Bay Pines Road. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker is Dawn Page. Paige, are you here?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Okay. You're also signed up to speak when item number 16 on our agenda comes up? Are you going to want to speak then as well?
Um, no, I do not.
Okay. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else? That's it? All right, that concludes our public comment, our current public comment session. I'm going to turn it back over to the chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Somerville. We're at the liaison and committee reports. Are there reports from any member of council?
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
Just a indication that the next Community Services Public Safety Committee meeting will be held on August 2nd.
Thank you. Any other committee reports?
Go ahead, sir.
Mr. Rodman?
Yeah, we got, we got a lot of things on the consent agenda, so let me bring you up to date on those. We actually have about $11 million in various contracts. The ones I'm going to discuss here, contracts and other items, all came through the Public Facilities Committee with a unanimous vote. And so that's the reason that they're on the consent agenda. Just to highlight those, item number three on there has to do with the sidewalk extension project Detour Road. And this is an adjustment between the two funding sources, between our local and what we get from what's called CVBG. There's a resolution establishing the policy for right-of-way acquisition. And this goes back to the referendum that was approved in 2018, that included $10 million for pathways and sidewalks. We have a large number of renewals at this point in time. And essentially, most of these are in the area of solid waste. Just to give you a little bit of an overview, these are typically multi-year contracts. And of this batch of nine or 10, we're about halfway through. You know, anywhere is from third year to fifth year. But we're about halfway through at this point in time. So this would be the next one-year extensions. And it includes $3 million for the extension of the landfill contract at Hickory Hill. There's a $2 million one for solid waste hauling with Republic. There's a $377,000 one for a second landfill that we have, which is called Oakwood. There's $248,000 for the yard waste recycling. There's $184,000 for the household hazardous waste. There's $145,000 for the Defuski solid waste. There's $110,000 for the electronic waste. And there's $108,000 for the disposal of tires. There is one in there, which is the storm debris. That only kicks in if, in fact, we have a storm event. And then there's $630,000 for the cleaning services of the county's facilities. So those are all a group of renewals of existing contracts. They typically have in place what kicks in, and whether it's a firm fixed price, or whether it is indexed to population and CPI. it is indexed to population and CPI. Then we have two for the airport. One is to buy a new crash truck for the Hilton Head Airport, $653,000. Being a safety item, that is 100% funded by the FAA. We have a change order to the Runway 3 extension, which is $264,000, and that is, 95% of that is through the FAA and the state. So we really have 5% of that particular one, a little over $10,000. We then have a contract with, for the water quality lab at USCB for $170,000. We have an award for fixing up some damage. We're experiencing erosion on the flyovers to the island, and so that needs to be fixed. It's $162,000. We have a $371,000 contract for something called the Brewer Memorial Stormwater Improvements, and that comes out of our stormwater fund. We have a small land acquisition, which I believe is for a dollar, but I believe that relates to stormwater also. And then we have almost $1 million for the old courthouse on Bay Street where the HVAC, which is quite dated, is being updated in preparation for the sheriff relocating there. So that's the items from Public Facilities that are on the consent agenda. As I said, they were all unanimous coming out of the county. Two other quick updates. We've been working on whether or not we want to do a transportation referendum, any sales tax, and not this year, but in November of '22. When we discussed it as a council in Public Facilities, we got a nod that we needed to at least pursue it. We didn't vote that it made sense to do it yet. But in the meantime, I've had meetings with several of the mayors, and they've always, they're very encouraging that they think that that's appropriate to put on the ballot. So probably over the next two months, we'll be having some discussions about that and also interfacing with what's called LATS, which is the Metropolitan Planning Organization for Highways. We have, you may remember, not too long ago, we approved a design contract or a design expenditure for the design of a section of 170 that runs from 278 out to 462. That section of road is failing. The local metropolitan planning group, the LATS group, had actually have studied this in detail and have a long-term, a medium-term, and a short-term fix. The short-term fix involved four projects, subprojects, if you will. One's been completed, which is the light at 462. The other three, in the interest of time, we at council approved proceeding with the design. The construction would obviously be a follow-on contract, and so I suspect that that will, even though we approved it, I believe the engineering and purchasing folks have determined that it should, the best thing we can do is have a sole source with the firm that did the basic studying of what needed doing. And even though it's probably covered under our prior vote, just to be on the safe side, I'll come back and see if anybody has any concern about that being a sole source for just the design, recognize we'll come back for the construction bid. And lastly, the airport at Hilton Head has been overloaded for the last couple of months. You know, we went from, I guess, three years ago, on the verge of losing commercial service because American was down to Charlotte as the last station, and they had the fleet of turboprops up for sale, and the extension was finished in time. We now have the three major airlines, and they're operating nonstop to 16 different cities, some of that being seasonal. So there's been a lot of congestion, but John Rembold and his staff have done a wonderful job of working through those issues with the airlines, with TSA, and the numbers that we're hearing in terms of how you measure congestion, you know, are coming down nicely. So I guess it's a good problem to have. But, Mr. Chairman, that's everything that I have from Public Facility. Sorry to be so long, but we had a lot of contracts.
Thank you. We're now ready to move on to the public hearings.
Joe, let me.
Mr. Lawson.
Yes, just want to hit the consent agenda items for the finance committee as well. We have a third reading of an ordinance for the 2021 budget amendment. And then we also have some approvals for renewal contracts from Finance Committee that were approved, looking to get those approved through a consent agenda. The Finance Committee will not meet again until August 16th, I think, and I want to say thank you to the finance staff who has worked very, very hard to get us to where we are with the budget. And again, looking forward to August 16th, and like Mrs. Schmelick, I am impatient at this point, and I'm looking forward to not having a committee meeting until that point. So, thank you.
We are now ready for the public hearings and action items. We're at item number 12, so I would ask a member of council for the approval of consent agenda items 1 through 12.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second it.
Okay, not all at once. Who made the second?
I did, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Duly motioned and seconded for the consent agenda. This will be done without any objection. I see no objections. Therefore, the consent agenda items 1 through 12 are approved. We're on to item number 13, which is a resolution designating two new public works enforcement officers. May I have a motion for that item, please?
So moved.
Second.
We have duly motioned and seconded for item number 13. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, this item will be approved without objection, and I see no objections. Item number 14 is a public hearing and third reading of an ordinance of the County Council of Beaufort County, South Carolina, establishing and adopting a school development impact fee, along with other language thereto. May I have a motion for this item, please?
So moved.
I'll second. Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead.
Like to second the motion, Chairman?
Yes, and I see that the officers are online. Are there any questions of the officers? Do the officers wish to make a statement before we vote on this and go to the public? For the third hearing of our impact fee? Seeing none? Okay. All right. So we have a duly motioned and seconded. Is there any member of the public who is in chambers who wishes to speak about the school impact fee? Mr. Somerville, do you see anyone in chambers who wishes to speak?
I do not, Mr. Chairman.
Is there anybody online?
No, sir.
Okay. Is there any member of council who wishes to address this issue before we vote?
Chairman, I would like to make a comment or two.
Go ahead.
And this has been a long time coming. This has been something that we, as a body, have been working on for years. And it's unfortunate that during that time, a lot of developers have come in and put in a lot of houses, have brought in a lot of children that didn't pay, when the houses were sold, that didn't pay for the impacts that they created. And this will give us an opportunity not to catch up, but at least not to get so far behind in the future. So the schools will have tremendous needs as our county grows, and this is just one avenue to give them the revenue that they need on the capital side. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rodman, and then Mr. Flowelling.
Yeah, I'll be brief. I continue to oppose this for basically three reasons. I tend to believe this is a double taxation. Somebody is building a new house or buying a new house, obviously, they're going to pay the impact fee in some form, plus they're going to pay on the houses that were, the schools that were built in the past. Secondly, I believe that referendums are the best way for the school district to raise money, in which case, you know, they go to the public, they say, here's where we're going to put the schools, here's what they're going to look like, here's what they're going to cost, and that money is collected through a property tax mechanism as opposed to a per-family mechanism, which this is. So that brings me to the last piece, which it does seem to me that what we're doing is we're moving from a property tax, which is more affordable for people, to paying on a per-family basis, which is not as affordable. So it's actually very regressive because it's a tax on the people who can least afford it. And that then takes you back to, you know, we're worried about losing teachers because we don't have affordable housing, and we're worried about, you know, how we're going to have workers have affordable housing, but this flies 180 degrees against that. So I'll vote against it, as I've said in the past. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, any other comments?
I might.
Mr. Flowelling, you were next, and then Mr. Cunningham.
Thank you. You know, Stu brings up a very good point. I would note that when an impact fee is charged, it gets paid, it goes to help build schools, that's all very fine, but that fee is then added into the price of the house, which is not really deductible when, you know, on individuals' yearly taxes, but their property taxes are deductible on their taxes. So it seems to me they're getting a benefit not receiving, not in being able to receive the tax break for it. Additionally, I am very, very disappointed that we don't have complete and unanimous agreement among the municipalities to join us in this effort. I think it places the county as in a disadvantage, and so I intend to vote no on this. I'd love to be able to do it if we had complete agreement. I would be concerned about it, but at least we'd have unanimous approval from all the municipalities, all the jurisdictions. So I'm going to vote no, sir.
Mr. Cunningham.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My thing still comes to the biggest problem. It's going to hurt our workforce housing. We're sitting here day in and day out, the municipalities as well, trying to negotiate with builders or try to figure out ways of how we can get more workers here in Beaufort County. Just like Mr. Rodden said, this goes completely against that. The people that can afford it could have afforded to send their kids to private school if they wanted to. You're just going to continue to hurt the people that can least afford the new impact fee, along with the raise that, the tax they want to do on, for our school budget, then as well, some people want to try to push through lost, and then a penny tax that we're trying to pass next year. I mean, that's four things that we're trying to push through in 12 months, and I remember sitting up here talking about lost and telling the people that we were going to come back to them next year for a penny tax, and I was told that's not going to happen by people on council. And here we are, two months later, already saying that it's coming up and we're talking about it in our committee meetings. I'm going to 100% stand against this. We have enough fees, we have enough impact fees on them. I do support the school budget by referendum for renovations or new schools, just like I did when we did it last time. So I hope that we can turn this down and continue to move forward.
Thank you. Any other comments before we take a vote? I see no other comments. When we were doing the motion in second, there was garbled, so I could not read exactly who was the first to make the motion and who was the first to make the second. Who was the first that made the motion here?
Somerville.
Okay. And who was the second?
I think it was me, correct?
Okay. So we will vote in that order. Mr. Somerville, you will go first.
Yes.
Ms. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Cunningham?
No.
Mr. Dawson?
Yes.
Mr. Flowelling?
No.
Mr. Glover? Mr. Hervishon?
No.
Mr. Lawson?
Mark Lawson, yes.
Mr. McCullen?
Yes.
Mr. Rodman?
No.
The chair will say yes, and we have 1, 2, 3, 4 no's and 7 yeses, and the motion carries. Item number 15 is a public hearing and third meeting of an ordinance to call for a referendum to allow qualified electors of Beaufort County, South Carolina, to vote to retain the council administrator form of government or change to the council manager form of government. May I have a motion for that, please?
So moved.
Mr. Somerville will make the motion. Second, please.
Second.
Mr. McCullen will make the second. Any discussion?
I'll go. Mr. Cunningham? From the beginning, I've been opposed to this, I'm going to continue to be. I think this is too much power for our government. I think the vote should be continued to be left to the people for who they want to be our auditor and treasurer. The system has worked for us in the past, and for some reason, people want to change it now for whatever decisions they want to make. I don't see how, we have a county council that can't even agree on most things unanimously, but yet we want to appoint officials for the rest of the county. That's not our job. I don't think that's what we're elected to do. I think it's for the people to vote who they want to represent them and not for us to pick who represents them. I honestly think it's an overreach of our power, and we should have no right to be able to do that. I also have another question for, maybe it's you, Mr. Chairman, or someone else in council. We went through the first and second reading back-to-back weeks, and then it was removed from our agenda with no knowledge to at least me, and I don't know how many other council members. Is there a reason that that was removed and postponed to now?
I can answer that. I can answer that. The first reason it was postponed was because we had requested Attorney General's opinion to determine whether the auditor and treasurer both would have to be appointed or elected together, yes or no, or whether it could be one of each. And we waited for the Attorney General's opinion to come back. It came back and said, it has to be both. You can't appoint one and elect the other. It has to be both. So that got it back on track to be voted on by council. And then this requires two public hearings. That was the other reason it got delayed a little bit, but the primary reason was for the Attorney General's opinion.
So both positions would have to be appointed by us?
Yes, sir. Either appointed or elected, and that decision gets made after the referendum.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
If I might, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes, I agree with Mr. Cunningham that this is a bad thing. It's too much power concentrated in a board. It actually wouldn't even be us that makes the decision about who the treasurer and the auditor would be. It would be made by the county administrator. I think that is too much power in one individual. The next thing I'd like to point out is that, the biggest, what is that noise in the background? Could everybody please mute their devices so that I can hear? So the biggest problem and the way that there is large-scale fraud in a treasurer or auditor's office and impact on county finances is when the auditor and the treasurer are in cahoots. Quite frankly, with two independent elected people representing all of Beaufort County, it's a lot less likely that there will be any kind of illegal conspiracy to defraud the county. So I, you know, I hate the idea that we're, that we would hire two people because they would get along. Quite frankly, I think the system is designed for them to be in opposition to each other, and I just don't think this is a good idea. Please, folks. Thank you.
Mr. Rodman, you were next.
Yes. I'm actually, I've always been a very strong proponent of this. If you look at it from a financial standpoint, the fact that there's audits, the fact that you're hiring professionals instead of somebody who is 21 and a registered voter, makes a lot of sense to me. I'm torn, though, because we want to put it on the ballot this year, and it seems to me we're so late in the process, I don't see a path forward of how this is being considered by the people. You know, I would bet 1 in 25 knows what former government we're even talking about. I don't see any group that's out there that's going to step forward because we can't advocate for it. So I would much prefer that we would do this in a year from now, which would still be six months before their, eight months before their terms end. I do understand the counter- I do understand the counterargument that it complicates the fact that it would occur at the same time that the two offices are being contested in an election. But I just think that it's too rushed at this point in time. I think it's got a very low probability of succeeding, and I personally would rather see us take some time, get it done right, argue the merits of it, which I think we're out of time to do. So I'm going to oppose it, not that I don't like it. It's just that I think it's the wrong time.
Mr. Lawson.
Yes, I'm going to vote for it. Whenever I first became a councilman, I went through training with the South Carolina Association of Counties, and they're the ones that actually are recommending that counties change to this form of government. And that's where this came from, is the fact that, you know, there being our body that we go to for information. I never knew the difference between the two. And again, there's very, very little difference between the two. So taking the recommendation of the South County Association of Counties, I am more than willing to put it to the people and let them decide what they'd like to do and have become educated on, understand what we do. And again, if they turn it down, we're still going to move forward and do very well if they decide to do it. We'll then move under the new form. So again, I'm going to vote it under that recommendation.
Any other comments?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to support it. This doesn't actually make it happen. It just gives council the right to make that decision or determination down the road. So in the event this passes, it won't automatically occur until we've debated it at council whether or not we actually want to implement it. So I'm going to support it for that reason. It gives us a tool to deal with situations that do come up or have come up in the past that make managing the county extremely difficult. And it's, again, it's not something that will happen automatically, and it's certainly not something that council would do without due consideration and serious debate. But it is something I think is necessary for us to at least have the ability to make that determination. So I'm going to support it.
Any other comments before we vote?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to weigh in at this time.
Mr. Glover.
I am really torn right now. I think the public needs to weigh in on this issue. Like Mr. Lawson, I was the first to hear about it at the county association meeting, and they talked about the different forms, and I was really perplexed about why we had the county administrative, so the county management type of government. And I was at a public meeting recently, and my constituents actually chastised me about communication. And I think we, in that I really want to pursue this and let the citizens decide whether they want to move forward with different types of government, I think I'm like Stu right now. If we move too fast, we may be confusing people, not knowing how exactly the difference between the two forms of government. And I think if we postponed it until 20... Even though it's a whole election cycle, if we postponed it to the 2022, there's a lot of opportunities for people to debate this. If we say we're going to put it on the referendum, 2022, there's a lot of people in the organization out there that can stand and debate this issue. So they can really inform the people, and then let the people weigh in on it. So that's where I'm torn at right now, Mr. Chairman. So when it's time to vote, I'll let you know how. I'm really torn between the two right now. I think it needs to be done. I think we need to educate the public. I think we need to inform the public. There are a lot of groups out there, like the League of Women Voters, that are the groups that could actually champion this cause for us, since we can't do it ourselves. And when you've got an informed community, they have a tendency of making the right choice. So, thank you.
Cunningham, do you have anything new to add?
Yes, I do. Just something to throw out there. You know, a lot of people here are talking about communication, getting to the public. And I say this with no disrespect to Eric, because I do support Eric and his position. County Council hasn't had the best track record with that position as of late. We've been cycling and treading water, and we finally think we've found the right person, which Eric knows I support him. Him and I have talked. But Mr. Flowelling did just say that that would be appointed by that position. I don't know about you guys, but I think maybe we should make sure that we are on solid ground before we give more power to another individual, especially to a position that we've had trouble filling in the past. And like I said, I'm not saying Eric isn't the right guy. Eric knows I support him, so him and I have no disagreement on that. But I just think we owe that to the people, to let our county administrator get his feet under him, get rolling, before we throw him another curveball before this next election cycle. I don't think it's fair to him. I don't think it's enough time for the people, let alone do I think it's enough power or too much power for one person. So I hope you guys contemplate that, the way that looks in the public eye, that we have the possibility to give more power to one individual for a position that we have trouble even holding down. I just want to throw that out there.
Any other comments before we vote?
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Just a question, I guess it's a current question, but my understanding is if we were to pass this three readings, then we can't advocate one way or the other. Is that correct?
That's correct. You can inform, such as press releases, but you cannot advocate which way people should vote.
Got it. What about the current auditor and the current treasurer? Will they be able to advocate?
They're not the county council. They didn't make the decision to put it to referendum. They certainly would be considering campaigning for reelection, so I think that's a different situation.
Thank you.
Any other comments before we vote? Seeing none?
Joe? Stu?
Yes, Mr. Rodman.
Yeah, my understanding is that Maria, who does a wonderful job and deserves a lot of credit for all the things that she's been through, I do believe she will campaign against this, and I think she's very popular, so it's another mountain to climb.
I hope she does.
We are now ready to vote. Mr. Somerville, you made the motion. You will vote first.
Yes.
Mr. McCullen?
Yes.
Mr. Cunningham?
No.
Mr. Dawson?
Yes.
Mr. Flowelling?
No.
Mr. Glover? Mr. Hervishon?
No.
Ms. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Mark Lawson, yes.
Mr. Rodman?
No.
At this point in time, we have five yes and five no. The chair says yes, therefore the item is approved. Six yes, five no. We are at item number 16, a public hearing. Oh, by the way, did we have any public members who wanted to weigh in on item number 15? I think we asked that. Was there any members either online or in chambers that wanted to weigh in?
I think they... Did you?
You already voted.
I'd still like to hear them.
I'd like to hear them.
Go ahead.
If possible.
Go ahead.
I was just wondering, Mr. Cunningham said that it was mentioned that they're not sure why all of a sudden this was brought up. And so I was just wondering what that was about. And then Councilman Lawson said that it was discussed during the council, I mean, the county administration conference that you went to. And I was just wondering if this was the first time that they had mentioned it. And then Mr. Glover's comment was that he believed that the public would make the right decisions. So I was wondering why, if they trust the public's decision, why that was going to be taken from them. Thank you. Sorry, I didn't have time to prepare. So, that's it. Thank you.
Once the item has been voted upon, now county council can provide information to the public as to what the two processes would be, either electing or appointing, and why there would be reasons to change from one to the other. But until that time, informing the public of any kind of change is moot at this point in time until county council actually took an action. Okay, we're at item number 16, which is a public hearing and third reading of an ordinance authorizing the execution of a quick claim deed and waiver of reverter for real property located at 1508 O'Shell Road with the TMS number of R1000105A40s. May I have a motion for that item, please?
Chairman, may I please make the motion to approve this item?
Absolutely, Mr. Flowelling. May I have a second, please?
Second.
Mr. Somerville, you will make the second. Duly motioned and second. Mr. Flowelling, do you want to make a comment about this?
If I could, please. You know, this has been going on for a long time. We finally have all the stuff worked out, and this comes to us as a ready package, something that we've anticipated for a long time. And it's good for Beaufort County to get this thing off the books and producing income for the county in the form of ad valorem taxes. We've got all the legal niceties worked out, and it's time. It's time.
Thank you. Any other comments before I go to the public?
Mr. Chairman, yeah, I did want to comment. I've spent a fair amount of time looking into this to satisfy myself, whether it's appropriate or not. First thing I want to comment on is our staff has done an excellent job looking into this. But bear in mind, the staff's job is to make a determination based on the ordinances that we passed, and they don't have the discretionary authority that the Planning Commission has or that we have. In other words, it's our job and the Planning Commission's job, to a certain extent, to make a determination as to whether there are mitigating or extenuating circumstances around the request, any request. And that's our job. The staff has looked at it and said it's spot zoning, and that's their determination, and that's fine. But in the following...
Paul, I think you got it. You're on the wrong item. I think you're on 17. 16 is the one you're talking about, Paul.
As Roseanne R. Danadana once said, "Never mind."
Okay. Is there any member of the public who wishes to make a comment about item number 16? Or 17, if they want. No.
I'm going to recuse myself for the rest of my life.
Is there any public comments about item number 16, either in chambers or online?
No, sir.
Okay. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, and we're ready to vote. I assume that we may be able to do this unanimously?
Without objection, please, sir.
This motion will be carried without objection, and I see no objections. Therefore, item number 16 is approved without objection. Finally, item number 17 is a second reading of an ordinance for a zoning map amendment, rezoning request for 5.238 acres at 335 Joe Fraser Road from T2 Rural to T2 Rural Center. May I have such a motion, please?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hervishon, were you the motioner?
Cunningham.
Cunningham.
Mr. Cunningham, you were the motioner. The second, please?
Second.
Mr. Somerville?
And Mr. Flowelling.
I was on mute, so I couldn't center.
Let's give the second to Brian, because he had a handicap. He was on mute. I have no such handicap at the moment.
Now we can have that discussion.
If I might, Mr. Chairman, this is in my district, and I'd like to speak in favor of the motion. I think that it is an appropriate zoning change. I think it corrects a mistake that was made in oversight that was made years ago. Several of the properties in the area that just down the road that are very similarly circumstanced and were built in almost an identical fashion have been given the zoning and upgrade in zoning. That particular one I'm thinking of, Chavis, was down the road, and it got S1 industrial. The players aren't asking for S1 industrial. They're asking for T2 Rural Center so that they can continue to operate their business without grandfathering it, so that they can get buy right, build buildings that are appropriate for the business they have and that they intend to... At this point, I would say they intend to operate well into the future. I think that it's clear that there is no impact on surrounding properties there to an upgrade. And any change of use, which certainly is possible, I don't want to rule it out, but any change of use would have to be approved by the Planning Commission, you know, especially anything that one would consider an obnoxious use right now, and certainly anything that interferes with neighborhood would have to be reviewed by the Planning Commission and the Zoning Board of Fields. I think that this was just a mistake, that people weren't paying attention to the zoning laws and the changes in zoning happened in 1999 and again, 2007, 2008. I think that we're here today with an opportunity to correct a mistake, and it's really an injustice. You know, anybody who drives along Joe Fraser Road, there are several businesses that operate on Joe Fraser Road, and this is, just like all of them, this property has been there forever, long before any surrounding residences were built. It's the idea that this was given, that notice of their zoning was available to them in 2005, 2007, as they went to build, I think is really overlooking the obvious, that quite frankly, individual owners of property don't go and get the building permits. It's all handled by the contractor. So the contractor may have known about it, but he didn't care what their zoning was as long as he was able to get the building permit. Had he notified any... Had anybody actually notified them of the change in zoning and the fact that any use that they had, that they were currently doing, is something that was grandfathered, we'd have seen the players here long before now asking for this to be changed. And folks, it's just unfair, quite frankly, that this happens. It was, you know, maybe it was, and I don't know, I wasn't here. Maybe it was an actual determination by the Planning Department in 1999 that this would all eventually become residential. But I can't imagine, if you drive down Joe Fraser Road, you would ever think they would all be residential. It's just too much residence, all the commercial opportunities at all, all along that road until you get to the end where property has been, you know, property at the lower bay end that has commercial opportunity. That seems unfair and unrealistic. I think we owe it to the players to correct this error and move on, let them move on. Thank you.
You're on mute, Joe.
Sorry about that, when I'm on mute. Any other comments?
Yeah, I do. With deep humility, I'd like to comment on the item, Article 17. I'd just like to ask everyone intimately, cut and paste the comments that I inappropriately made about Article 16 and move them to Article 17. I won't repeat them. But just to go on to say, I do think it's our job to look at this and see if there are extenuating circumstances, mitigating circumstances, that would allow us to make this zoning request. And I think there are. I believe that the petitioners here did not know what their zoning or did not understand what their zoning was in 1999. I don't think that they understood it in 2005 when they added another building, or 2007, that their contractor did, obviously, but I don't think they did. Because if they had, then we would have been having this discussion in 2005 or 2007. So here we are. I think, and I think the petitioner mentioned earlier that there was another moving and storage facility up the road, a little piece, and that was given S1 zoning. So there are just a whole lot of equity issues here that trouble me. And so I'm going to support this rezoning. And again, I respect the staff. I know they... I know they did exactly what we asked them to do, is interpret the ordinances as we write them. But again, we have the, it's, we have the discretion to interpret them in a way that makes sense with mitigating and extenuating circumstances. Again, the planning commission looked at it and they passed it four to one, and so I'm certainly going to support it.
Mr. Chairman, I have a comment.
Yes, Ms. Howard.
I'm going to vote against this again. This is the second time in the past three months I've heard owners say that they didn't know their zoning changed on their property. I'm not saying that that is a good or bad excuse. It's not up to me to judge that. I have talked with the county administration about maybe changing some things so that on other states, you know what the zoning is on your, on your property when you get your bill. And there may be a way that we can do something like that because I don't think there's a real good excuse for not knowing what the zoning is on your property. I have property in Georgia and I knew immediately when I got my bill when the zoning had changed and I was able to make comments on it if I wanted to, or not. So I don't see that, if we don't make some changes on that, we're going to hear this excuse over and over again that I didn't know the zoning was changed on my property. And, you know, but that's why I'm going to vote against it, because I think a property owner is up to them to know what the zoning is on their property.
That is absolutely correct. If I may, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a couple of comments about this particular item. Whether or not council wants to rezone the property is up to council. But to allow people to come in or for you all to say that we're rezoning this property because staff did not communicate properly with a property owner or something like that about their zoning, you are right, Councilmember Howard, you're going to continually hear that excuse over and over and over. In this particular case, these folks pulled two permits to add on and improve this property. In both of those cases, on the application and the zoning permit, the staff clearly showed that the property was grandfathered and it was only allowed a 15% increase to the property. Now, whether or not a contractor communicated that to the property owner, I don't know. We don't know who the property owners are in many cases whenever somebody comes in to apply for a permit. If you want staff to start communicating to property owners whenever a contractor comes in to pull a permit, that is going to make the approval process much more lengthy because we're going to have to reach out to every property owner that comes in and says something and says, hey, do you know what the zoning of your property is? Do you understand what that means? And that, this, that, and the other. So I just think that's an inappropriate comment for anybody on council to make that statement about staff. It is the responsibility of the property owner to know the zoning of their property. Staff is available to answer questions. Secondly, to Councilmember Flouelling's point, if this property is rezoned tonight, there will be no additional planning commission review for any use or change of the property. If it's allowed in that zoning district, all they will have to do is pull a burning building permit and a zoning permit to change the use of the property to something more intense. That is why the staff recommended denial of the rezoning. Now, again, if council wants to recognize the fact that it's a longstanding business and it's not going to go away, which is the reason why you grandfather things to begin with, is to eventually get rid of that use in that area, if you don't think that's a likely scenario and you want to approve the rezoning, then by all means, staff will not have a problem with you voting to approve it. But please, let's not say in the process of doing that, that it was because staff failed to communicate appropriately with a property owner when they may have never had the opportunity to communicate with the property owner on the zoning of the property. And as, again, it's the property owner's responsibility, it's Mr. Player's responsibility as a business owner to understand the details of his business. So, thank you all very much. I appreciate it.
Okay, any other comments before we vote?
You know, Mr. Chairman, if I might, but just a little bit, I was cautious, Eric, to say that any obnoxious use, any change of use that would be, that would negatively impact the neighbors, would have to be approved by the planning commission and the zoning board of Beals. And I think that's an accurate statement. And I'd like to, I'd like to also suggest that, you know, if we're, if we're worried about a permit being drawn and the owner not clearly understanding what the zoning is, as I think clearly happened in this particular case, you know, it might be appropriate for us to require the property owner's signature on a building permit where the, where there is a space on the permit that clearly defines what the current zoning is of the, of the property. I think this situation could have been avoided in 2005, 2007, had that been required. So, and I don't think it would be all that much of a burden on staff to just require a property owner's signature on a building permit. Quite frankly, I'm surprised that, that that isn't already the situation. Also, the tax bills on this property, he was paying at the commercial rate, he wasn't paying a residential rate. So the information that he saw every year was that this is a commercial piece of property. That's all, you know, that's all there is.
Okay, those are some good suggestions, you know, going forward, perspective. I don't think we can do it, you know, retro. So I think, you know, it's up to us. We've heard the individuals, we've heard recommendations, it's now time for council to take action. So with that in mind, Mr. Cunningham, you made the motion?
I did. Can I make one more quick statement? I agree with Ms. Howard that it can be a slippery slope. I just want to make sure that we don't use this gentleman as our example. That's my, that's my only thing. I get 100% where she's coming from, I could see that happening time and time again. I just want to make sure that we don't put this burden on this gentleman or his property based on, you know, issues that we might have or processes that we need to clean up or tighten up ourselves. I will make the first vote. I was the motion, I vote yes.
Okay. By the way, everybody does understand, this is the second reading. We still have a third and final reading. Okay, the second was by Mr. Somerville?
Yes.
Mr. Dawson?
No.
Mr. Flouelling?
Yes.
Mr. Glover?
Uh, no.
Mr. Hervishan?
Yes.
Ms. Howard?
No.
Mr. Lawson?
Mark Lawson, yes.
Mr. McKellen?
Yes.
Mr. Rodman?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Yesses are eight, the nos are three. The second reading is approved. We're at the final citizen's comment for the evening. Are there any citizen comments, either in person or online, before we do some final action?
No, sir, there aren't.
Okay. Mr. Hervishan, you wish to make a comment?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to address a statement that I made at our last meeting on the 14th. I made a rather flippant comment in regard to law enforcement at Buckingham Landing.
Chris, I can't, I can't hear him, Patrick. Can you turn that, his microphone up? Sorry, I thought you could do it from there. Apologize. Sorry, Chris, I just couldn't hear what you were saying. Thanks, Patrick.
Okay, so, thank you. As I was saying, I made a rather flippant comment because it contains the law enforcement at Buckingham Landing. And I just wanted to take this opportunity to publicly and sincerely apologize to the fine men and women of the Eber County Sheriff's Office. And that's it, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate the time.
Thank you, Mr. Hervishan. Any other comments before we adjourn? Okay, seeing no other comments, thank you very much. You know, it's not easy at times running the meetings and making comments and considering items, but we do the best we can in front of the public. So I thank everyone on county council for their integrity, for their honesty, for their forthrightness. And we'll see you on Wednesday at 2:00 PM for a special meeting of county council to approve the county council budget and to set the millage rates and to approve the school district budget. So stay safe and hope the rain stops there. Good night, all.
Night.